All right, good evening everybody and welcome to this meeting of the Orange County School Board. I'm going to begin by asking everybody to please stand and bow your head in a moment of silence and keep the victims of the California wildfires in your thoughts as we do our moment of silence, please. Thank you so much. So tonight, it's a little bit bittersweet for five of us. Five of us are leaving this board. It's been a great run for all of us. You know, it's so interesting for me, I don't know about you all fellow board members who are leaving, but I either get condolences as if somebody in my family has died, or I get congratulations as if it's a wonderful thing to be leaving the board. Truth of the matter is, I think I speak for all of us when I say that it is a bittersweet moment. I've enjoyed working immensely with the professionals in this room. I'm going to not say a lot tonight because very, very candidly, I said everything that I wanted to say at our last State of the Schools and I know many of you were there, but I just will say very simply, thank you for allowing me the opportunity and the privilege and the honor of working with you. This is a great team. You all are incredible professionals without exception. In my eight years on this board, every single senior administrator I've worked with has put children first and cared first and foremost about what's best for that child, what's best for that child's family, and what's best for the future of that child. And I've just been so honored and privileged to work with all of you. I've learned a tremendous amount from each and every one of you, but more than anything, I've just taken so much from the love that you have for our community and our children and it's been my honor to work with you. So thank you very, very much, all of you. We have a recognition tonight for a number of our members for their years of service. So I have a very sort of abbreviated script here, so we're going to sort of wing this board members. And I want to make sure, I know, me winging it is always scary, Mrs. Robinson. This audience of everybody knows that. So I do know that we have a little award for each of you that I understand, Ms. McGill, is that correct? It's there in the back and somebody's going to bring them out. So I think what I'll do is, let me just do this. Let me start at one end of the table and go down to the other end and see if y'all would like to say a few words, our outgoing board members. So I thought I'd start with Ms. Moore.
I'm used to going last. This is just, you had to change it up. Because I'm District 7, so you know, the first shall be last, right? So it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. I, today when I started at a dedication, I sort of shocked them. I said, you know, when I first came to this board, we were about to close Maxi Elementary and they're like, all of a sudden I could feel the, you know, the rim, like, what'd she say that for? But look at where we are today, look at how that changed, look at where we grew. And Mrs. Caddell, when I first came here, I didn't know you very well, I think I voted against you. And then she trained me and became best friends. And the first week out, I started off on the wrong foot, but that was really, you know, you think you know something from campaigning, but until you get down here and you meet the staff and you really get immersed in it, sometimes things aren't always as you see them. So it's really important to, and we've learned that, you have to listen to everyone. You listen to all sides of an issue and then try to be fair to all. And I think this board's done a tremendous job of just looking out for children. So the first few years, we were dealing with a lot of structural and big issues, desegregation and trying to get that one mill passed. And then Dr. Jenkins, by the time you were here a couple of years, there wasn't much to do anymore. Because it really, thanks to all of you. And I think that's when then I was able to just really get into things that I loved that were just add-ons and enhancements. And so your staff working with me to be able to write a book and, you know, that was just really special. I know that's going to carry with me to the county commission because I researched the history of all these schools and the community and that knowledge is just invaluable, but I couldn't have done it without your staff. And the principals were amazing. I still, Mrs. Bird's out there, I still absolutely have a passion to teaching children history. So I'm not sure how that's going to go in the future, but again, it was because we worked so well together as a team. We took care of business, we got the structure of this organization going. Well, the staff you've hired was tremendous and so it was an incredible opportunity. So anyone who has that opportunity to serve, I would recommend it. The campaigning is not the fun part, that's the difficult part. When you get here, that's really the joy of being able to serve people. You have to, on the campaign side, it has to be about you every day, all day for a year, to really then have the opportunity to serve and do things for others. And so you have to really be able to go on both sides of it. But I thank all of you for all the trips, all the travel, all the great things we got to do and learn together. And I can't believe it's our last meeting, but thank you all. I really enjoyed serving with you.
Well, thank you, Chair. I have a few more words than she did. And I wrote mine down. So the first thing, the first thing I want to do is, I do want to thank the constituents of District 2 for placing their trust in me for the past 12 years. It's been an honor to serve that area and I appreciate all the support and encouragement that I was given from them. So I don't want to take up too much time, but a little time. So the accomplishments that we've seen during the past year, we know them. I'm not going to reiterate them. I'm especially proud of our digital curriculum and technology initiative that we've put forth since I was on the board and the fact that we issue laptops to every middle and high school student. That's just phenomenal and I couldn't be prouder of that. And the challenges that we have, that we were faced with, we were able to mitigate them, so we weren't hurting our children's education. So in fact, I came across my second term swearing in speech and here's what I said. I said, "My first term gave me every experience that a school board member could hope for: community outcry on the time change, the unfortunate conflict of a teacher impasse hearing, the emotional small school closure controversy, a very contentious high school rezoning, bilingual class elimination, and asking the public for one mill." That was in my first term. After that, it was easy. I felt like I could jump through a hoop of fire after that. They say, "What doesn't kill you makes you stronger," and I really think that it did for me. But after that, it was really a recognition that when we worked together and when we put our minds together and when we work with our community, that we can get through those challenges. And we did. Speaking of challenges, I'm going to take this moment because there's one in District 2 that started last year but won't finish until this new year. And that's the potential name change for Stonewall Jackson Middle School. So as I had stated before, I wouldn't bring this up myself initiated, it had to come through, up through the community and that's exactly what it did. It's in the SAC process right now, School Advisory Committee. But of course, the potential name change centers around the ongoing national debate that many schools were named after Confederate generals during the civil rights movement to spite the desegregation order. So I looked up the original entry in our school board minutes archives, big books that were, you know, typed manually. And other than saying that the Inglewood Middle School was being named Stonewall Jackson, there was no explanation as to why. You know, it wasn't like the general came through there, his mother was born there, he raised there, no explanation. There were also up to five other names that were being considered according to articles in the Orlando Sentinel. Interestingly enough, the other names considered included Thomas Edison, Jetson B. Walker, Blake Barton, Navajo Eastern, East Orange, and Jefferson Davis. So while I personally would support a name change if the community came to me, you don't know what the atmosphere is going to be like when this finally gets to the board. So my request would be for the returning board members and the new board members to give the incoming board member, Johanna Lopez, their support for whatever proposal comes through. So I just wanted to set that out there and give a heads up. Now, speaking of Jackson Middle School and Liberty, I'm looking over there at Mr. Morris. I want to use my last opportunity, my last opportunity, to say that those school facilities still need some major renovation inside them. On my school, Farrell School tour, I saw some areas that looked pretty rough, so I'm just appealing, appealing to you, setting the stage. So there's more that we can do there. As a community, we must continue to support our teachers, advocate for more state funding for employee salaries. We have to look for additional strategies to help our most fragile of our students, those with mental or physical disabilities, our gifted and advanced students will always need challenge and enrichment to enable them to soar to greater heights of achievement. And I'm hearing wonderful things about our new gifted magnet. And at the same time, our students who are in the middle, they hold huge potential that I feel still needs to be tapped. And we have to give them the opportunity, maybe those gifted strategies, maybe those other initiatives that we do for the top and the bottom, we have to have them, help them be nurtured so they can reach those potentials. And personally, I'd love to see more foreign language opportunities starting in elementary school. So that's all, that's all that I leave with as far as what we need to do. But there's so many folks I want to thank, and here goes. Timber Creek High School, Principal Potawano, her team and her kids gave me an incredible honor and gave me the equivalent of a senior walkout moment. The drums were, you know, playing, the kids were lined up, they gave me a thing of paper to throw up and I walked down the aisle of students and it will, I will always remember it. It was an incredible honor and I am so thankful. I think is Dr. Potawano here? She said she might stop by. But thank you. I want to thank Ron Blocker. He was the superintendent when I came on board and he did a lot in his 12 years to really push that momentum forward. He really started that trajectory. I want to thank the school board services, the board support staff, Margarita and Deborah and Marilyn, and especially Nancy, because she's the one was assigned to me. So thank you so much for helping with the scheduling for research and constituent relations. You don't know it, but they handle a lot of the calls that come in to us and some of those can get pretty heated and they do it with calmness and with dignity and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank Superintendent Jenkins and her cabinet members, the area superintendents, the district staff. You always help me answer constituent questions or concerns promptly. Dr. Jenkins, you are a phenomenal leader. And I still say that my most important vote was when I cast it for you to come on board. So thank you. And I want to compliment your extremely capable and high-character staff. Honestly, I just, I'm sure I speak for everybody else, working with you all is uplifting. I mean, when you, when we work with you, you feel like you just have to be better. And it's that high character that you have and I'm so appreciative of it. You work very hard. You work very hard. And Council, General Counsel Rodriguez, thank you too, and your legal team, you're always there if we have a legal question and you've really expanded that group and so that it reaches all aspects of our educational system. And the principals, the faculty, the staff of District 2, I want to thank them for their warm hospitality every time I visited. Let me tell you, the principals, the teachers are working so hard out there. They're working hard. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but I want them to know that I recognize it and I know everybody else is here. And for my fellow school board members, those of you who are staying and those moving on, I wish you the very best in your future. I've enjoyed working with all of you all, even when we didn't agree. I don't know, it was still, it was just, again, uplifting and we got through those times. I have the utmost respect for each one of you. And you always had the interest of students. I really can say that I'm part of a board who really looked to what was best for students. So here's what I'll remember. Joey, your creativity. Nancy, your courage. Linda, your patience and understanding. Bill, your leadership. Ms. Kat, your fierceness. And Pam, your community, you're so savvy with your community. And Christine, your strategic skill. I really, each one of you have just a characteristic that I learned from. It's been my honor and believe it or not, I'm going to miss these meetings. So I have to thank friends and family. My husband Jim supported me through the hard times and celebrated with me during the good. He's always had my back. My son Jimmy is a remarkable young man who came up through OCPS, who taught me that our children are capable of doing the impossible. Like learning to ride a horse, joust, and speak with an English accent to become a main character at Medieval Times. Let me tell you, when my son came home and said he wanted to be a squire at Medieval Times, can you, I mean, I had to comport my face. Okay, son, you're dropping out of college to go ride a horse. But he's on to another fulfilling career and I couldn't be prouder of him and he taught me, we have to always believe in our kids. No matter what they come and say to you, you have to believe it. My sister Sheila, she kept me grounded, especially when the issues became controversial. I want to thank my friend Joanne Johnson in the back, you all know Joanne. She helped me with all three of my campaigns and we know how tough that can be and was always there when issues became stressful. And I have to thank my neighborhood, my teacher friends and everyone I met along these, the way, who gave me support and encouragement every inch of the way. So I want to congratulate all the new school board members and to the new chair. I want to congratulate our new District 2 school board member, Johanna Lopez. Her beautiful daughter, Gia, is here representing her. Are you, did you join the Navy? Just signed up for the Navy, so thank you very much. So I know, I've met with Ms. Lopez now a couple of times and I know she's going to be an excellent, outstanding board member. She's going to bring a real passion and a new freshness to the position and I'll be there if she has any questions, but I ask that you all give her the same strong support that you've given me. So I'm getting close to the end here. This summer, this summer I saw Hamilton. And I want to read a couple of things that I think when, during that act, I thought it described us. So Hamilton says, "James Madison won't talk to me, that's a non-starter." And George Washington says, "Winning was easy, young man, governing's harder." And Hamilton, "They're being transient." Washington, "You have to find a compromise." Hamilton, "But they don't have a plan, they just hate mine." And Washington, "Convince them otherwise." So I leave this board assured that the citizens of Orange County can indeed have confidence in their local public school system. Our children are on good hands. So that's it. Thank you, everyone. It's a wrap for Darryl Flynn in District 2.
I'm going to try and do this without crying. I too have notes, sorry guys. I first want to start off by just thanking so many people. I'm going to do a thanking first. And I thank my family who supported me through all of this for the last 10 years. It really takes a toll on a family to have your, in particular, your mom, out a lot at night and not home to make dinners. My kids got really good at using the microwave. So I want to thank my family, my husband Bill, who's been my biggest advocate through all of this. So for supporting me and allowing me the opportunity to serve for the past 10 years, it's been phenomenal. The students and the families of District 6 for electing me in 2008 and keeping me here for 10 years. It's been so fun to be there and celebrate all the ups and downs of all the things going on in District 6. I thank them for that. And all the OCPS staff at the school level, Ms. Flynn said it, the principals and the teachers and every single person on the school campus, they work really hard and I appreciate all of you so much. I appreciate how wonderful you treat the students and the things you do every day to make the lives of our students better. I really appreciate that. The employees here at the RBELC, Magic Way, Transportation, all the different learning communities, all of you guys, you just, you're amazing too. You run around and people always say, "You have so many people down at the RBELC." You're working hard too and it's noticed. And I thank you all for being the ones who pick up my, answer the phone when I call and I have questions because there's always, there's been, during 10 years of school board, there's a lot of questions that need answering, so I appreciate all of you. School board services, the wonderful folks that have been there for 10 years, I'm going to miss you ladies so much. And Joseph was there for a little time too, so I can't say it's just the ladies because Joseph was with us for a while too. You guys are amazing. You answer the phone, you do, you meet me for drive-bys. They know what that means. They're awesome. You guys are the best. Thank you so much. I'm going to miss you, but I'm not far and we'll do lunch. We will do lunch. And my fellow board members, it's been so much fun with you guys too. So I'm going to flip now that I've done some thank yous and I'm going to talk just about, I did it in segments. The things we survived during this 10 years. We survived the Great Recession. That was my very first board meeting. I got sworn in in November and in January, when we've had our very first executive session where we were talking about teacher salaries and we were told that we were going to have to make this $240 million cut or something crazy. And I know I've told this story before, I sat there as a brand-new school board member wondering, am I going to throw up or am I going to start crying? And I couldn't decide which. I figured I'd better not do either because they'd all think I was crazy. But thank goodness, the stimulus package came and bailed us out a lot and we didn't have to do as significant a cuts as we thought. But we survived the recession, we got the one mill to help us out. We survived suing the Board of County Commissioners. We were tough, we were strong, and we did it and we survived it. We've survived and we're still currently suing the legislature. And I think I am proud of all of those things where we've been brave to do that. And all of us have survived multiple elections, you know. Of the five board members leaving, we have 56 years of experience amongst the five of us, which that's many elections under our belts. So, and surviving elections is tough and it's always been great to have you guys there with me to push me on and support me during that. The things I'm most proud of during our, my 10 years is the fact that we achieved unitary status, that we got out from under the federal desegregation order. I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of our increased graduation rate. In 2008, when I started, it was 74% and it's now 94% in our traditional high schools. I'm very proud of that. I'm so proud that we hired Barbara and Woody, two great hires, both still doing such a fabulous job and give the district such a wonderful sense of trust within the business community and just the community at large. People trust OCPS and it's because of your, both of your leadership, so thank you. And I'm proud that we won the Broad Prize and we got to go to New York even though we stayed in the world's smallest hotel rooms. Those things, and I'm not kidding you, they were a matchbox. You could hardly walk around the bed. Yes, you washed your hair, it was, yeah, interesting. So anyway, when you join Florida School Boards Association and you go as a new board member and you're getting trained, they tell you, because of the sunshine laws and you're not allowed to talk about items you would vote on potentially, they tell you that you can talk about food, fun, family, and I had friendship. And during these 10 years, we've done that. We have, it's one thing that I'm so blessed to have been truly say that I'm friends with all of you. We support each other through raising our families. Not always great things happening and you're always there and I appreciate y'all's support through some of my darkest times as a parent and the staff too, that knows what we went through. We've been through children's weddings and children's divorces. We've been through, I've been able to enjoy some of you guys' grandchildren, which is very exciting. We've been through having our parents pass and we've been there to support each other during that. And I think I figured out that all of us, but possibly Ms. Gould, has had a surgery or two during our time. Ms. Gould might be the only one. Christine did it at the last minute. So Pam, you're the healthy one. We support each other through all that. And then, and then the other things, we've just had so much fun. That's the part that I'm really going to miss. Our trips, the ones I can think of that I know I went on that we all, Tallahassee, Tampa, Ocala, Miami, New Orleans, Boston, San Francisco, those are all fond, fond memories that I'm going to have. Our nights of playing trivia. We would get together after board meetings if it wasn't too late and the trivia place was still open and accepting us to be a team. We were called the Board Junkies. That was our team name. And we were known to win a few times. We had a little fun with that. We were always thankful when Mr. Rodriguez and Eileen Fernandez and Dylan Thomas and other random people that knew more trivia answers than we did would help us with the answers. Of course, Mr. Siblet is a really amazing trivia player. He's amazing. I have a few memorabilia. We all got Cuban bowling shirts. For those of you who remember the Cuban bowling shirts, Mr. Siblet's favorite Cuban, Cuban bowling shirts. I will forever have mine. Hey, don't cut down the OCPS shirts. I had a blast doing lip sync for lungs with my good friends Pam and Linda. We did Nancy Sinatra's, "These Boots Were Made For Walkin'" and we killed it. We didn't win, but we had a blast. We did win the karaoke clash where we all got up there, not everyone, because unfortunately Kat wasn't able to be with us and Bill wasn't with us, but Woody stepped in. We sang "We Will Survive," complete with a split, an air split by Mr. Rodriguez. We won the West Orange Chamber karaoke clash. And we survived. We performed skits at the Christmas holiday parties. We sang songs. We danced for the annual, for that celebration many times. And so with that, I'm going to do, you know how in high school when you leave your senior year, you bequeath something to the, I have a few things I'm going to bequeath to the three of you left. Linda gets my fleece blanket that I wear in my lap here because it's freezing up here all the time. And Linda, so Linda's going to get to keep my fleece blanket. I need it tonight though. I'll give it to you at the end. It's always so cold in here. And then, because we never know what we're going to do at the last, till the last minute with those Christmas celebrations, I'm giving, I'm giving Kat and Pam. Pam gets the bag full of fun headbands. All the different Christmas headbands that we wear that every year stayed in my office. There's plenty of them for the new board members as well. And Kat gets the Jingle Band. So I bequeath all of those to you. And then, because I've always tried really hard to sit up here and say whatever it is I had to say at our board meetings as succinctly as possible. So I don't speak a lot, but I will, I have been known to sing a few times or two. I sang Happy, the Farrell song Happy, when I sang it Barbara's Visioning Day. I sang "Happy Support Person of the Year" to you while sucking helium one year at the Support Person of the Year. I sang Kenny Rogers' "The Gambler" when we told Jesus goodbye. At Mr. Siblet's first thing, I sang a little line of "Take It Easy To You" because you had seven women on your mind. Four that want to own you, two that want to stone you, one says she's a friend of yours. And then, of course, he sang "We Will Survive." So it's very fitting that tonight I will leave you with a song. And I'm going to try not to cry. And if you happen to, because you're all going to know it, maybe we'll do it twice because it's very short. Once you've heard me, feel free to join right in. I'm, I can't do it. "I'm so glad we had this time together, just to have a laugh or sing a song. Seems we've just get started and before you know it comes a time we have to say so long." Goodnight, everybody. I love you all. I love you all.
Okay, so that's hard to follow.
You can sing.
Miss Cato.
I don't sing. My very best friend from high school is sitting right out here. She's been with me for forty-eight years through thick and thin, and she will tell you, I do not sing. So you're safe. I don't even try to lip sync. So, this morning, when Christine talked about creative, I was like, getting ready to dry my hair, and I was like, "I wonder how many School Board meetings I have sat at." Been here for sixteen years. In case you ever wondered, that's three hundred and thirty-six Board meetings. So, I know, I checked the map twice, because I was like, "That can't be right." So, how do you reflect on sixteen years serving the families in the community of Orange County? The Kenny Chesney song "Don't Blink" comes to mind. In the song, a hundred-and-two-year-old man is asked what his secret to life is. He says, "Don't blink." It starts off saying, "Just like when you are six years old, and you take a nap, and you wake up, and you're twenty-five, and your high school sweetheart's your wife." It goes on to talk about your children growing up so fast. That's how I feel the past sixteen years have gone. In a blink, I started a journey with a child in college, one in chiropractic school. I finished the journey with a child who lives in Denver and is a staff scientist for an environmental engineering firm, married, and in a blink, his babies, a boy and a girl, are in second and third grade. My other son lives here in town. In a blink, his chiropractic practice is celebrating twelve years, and he and his wife Sarah have three boys. So as the song says, "Don't blink." While I wish Rob and Sarah were with us tonight, and I hope that Watson and Sutton could come, I am so proud of him and his wife. They are coaching Watson's basketball team right now as I speak, sharing their talents and giving back to the next generation. As many of you know, I started this journey because the schools in my neighborhood were losing out to all the new development in the east and west parts of this community. Sorry, Daryl, and sorry, Pam. It's been happening for a long time. My schools weren't getting painted. The school air conditioner never seemed to work. The facility needs were huge. My little section of Orange County that I represent has not seen the tremendous growth of other areas of the county. I leave office with two new elementary schools and a new middle school, and a high school completed in District One, and all the schools renovated and many rebuilt. During the most trying economic times, I had the honor to chair the School Board. Hard decisions had to be made, but we did it as a team. Although I was chairman of the Board and the spokesperson, I was speaking on behalf of my fellow Board members. Thank you to my colleagues. We have moved mountains for the children of this community. I was a student at Winter Park High School in 1968 during court-ordered desegregation. I am very proud of this Board, our legal team, and the superintendent and her staff. In October 2010, the federal courts ruled that we were no longer a dual system, and we achieved unitary status. No longer do the children have to leave their neighborhood and be bused to another school to receive a quality education. I am also excited that one of those dreams I had is being realized this year. A new high school performing arts magnet will open next year at University High School. A thank you sometimes doesn't seem enough. Where to start? To the faculty and staff members at our schools, thank you for what you do each and every day. Your smiling faces lift our children. To our parent and community volunteers, thank you for sharing your time and talents with our children. To our operations and facilities people, you make sure the bus arrives each day, there is food on the table for the students, the lights and air conditioning is working, and it does take a village to operate our school district. To the administrative teams at the District One schools, thank you. You have always opened your doors to me and made me feel so special. I will miss each of you. To the superintendent and her senior staff, thank you for taking care of the children of this district and making it easier for me to serve the families I represent. To the employees' house here at the Ronald Blocker Educational Leadership Center, thank you for welcoming me each and every day during these past sixteen years. To the constituents in District One, thank you for allowing me to represent you on the School Board for the past sixteen years. I leave you in good hands. Your new School Board representative, Angie Gallo, will do a great job. And Angie is sitting in the back. She's here, she's here tonight. So Angie, I know that we're in good hands. Finally, to my family and friends, you have lifted me up when my spirits were down, and you have loved me unconditionally. You never asked to have a daughter, a sister, a mother, or a friend in public life. You have allowed me to live my dreams and hold my hand along the way. Thank you for always being there. In closing, back in the late nineties, I heard a quote from fan anthropologist Margaret Mead. "The solution to adult problems tomorrow depends on large measure upon how our children grow up today." I have used those words to guide me during the past sixteen years. And remember, as the song says, "Trust me, friends, sixteen years goes faster than you think. Don't blink."
Well said. Ms. Colbert.
So I have a brief presentation, but before I do that, I want to take a personal moment to thank all of you who are going, for both your mentorship and your friendship. And I want to thank you all for serving this community selflessly, sacrificing your time with your family, doing what you think is right, and leaving this school district and this community better than when you came in. For that, I thank you. And the district has something for the Chair. A nice little memento in recognition of your service. It's a crystal gavel.
Can't bang that one hard.
I would say, don't hit that one too hard.
And it says, "Bill Sablet, Orange County School Board Chair, November ten to November of 2018," with the seal right here, so don't bang that very hard. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Ms. Gould.
I'm in denial, still. Not that I am not looking forward to working with the new Board members, because I am very much, but we, like every other family, and I know the word "family" is often overused when it talks about teams, but this has become a family. We don't always agree. We, yeah, I didn't mean it. The flowers are in the way. We don't always agree. We don't always have the same perspective. But the one thing that we could always do is trust one another. And trust is vitally important in the work that we do. We knew that we could say things and it would not be misconstrued. We knew that we could be honest about our positions, and it would be respected even if it wasn't agreed with. And so, trust is something that you get in small blessings throughout your life with colleagues that you work with and even friends sometimes. So I thank each and every one of you for your service, for your compassion, and for your trust.
Mrs. Gordon.
Well, it's hard to follow all of this tonight, believe it or not. I think each of you have just been extraordinary. I think I've had the opportunity, and I mean, I've heard things like twelve years, ten years, sixteen years. And you all know I am the senior by age, by age. And then I'm the senior by experience, because I have eighteen going on nineteen, okay? You, I've had an opportunity to work with many Boards and two superintendents. Both superintendents, Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Blocker, was just an honor. Mr. Blocker served two months. He got selected in August of twenty, what is it? No, August, yeah, August of two thousand. And I was in the audience when the Board voted him in, in August. I was sitting there like Angie, waiting to take my seat, because I had won the primary at that time. And I was very excited as a School Board member to just work with Mr. Blocker, because I had worked with Mr. Blocker, with Cherokee when he was principal, then when he was psychologist, and we worked together. We were staffing kids into Magnolia, Gateway, Cherokee. And none of the kids, none of my parents wanted the children in my district to go at that time. And you all know what I'm talking about. That was way back then, the sixties. They did not want the children to go to Gateway. And Mr. Blocker was the principal of Cherokee. And when I talked to Mr. Blocker as the counselor and staffing chairperson of Orange Center Elementary, I said, "What am I gonna do?" He said, "Just go ahead and send them over, but don't tell them it's the same school." And I thought that was so unique for him to come up and say that. And he accepted so many students from School Board District Five to go over to Cherokee to get an education. And we run into those children today. They're all grown. Some of them have succeeded and really made it. Some are still, you know, with mental and health problems, because back then they were staffing everybody. You know, you just didn't have to be bad. You know, they just didn't have a place. But I do want to say that this Board saw to it that we have a behavioral center. You voted, Christine, Pam Gould, you didn't argue, Daryl Flynn, Colbert didn't argue about, you know, moving Cherokee. Before Nancy came on board, they had given up Gateway. And all three of the schools ended up in my district. Cherokee is the latest. And now I'm under the leadership, Joey didn't argue, Nancy didn't get upset. This Board, and then when the people confronted me and said, "Who did this big thing?" You know, and I said, "Well, the Board voted." And nobody had argued about it. And that was incredible. You are one of the most incredible Boards that I have ever worked with. And I've worked with some of the best Board members in the nation, and I've worked with some of the best Board members in Orange County. But you five have surpassed it all. And this Board with the three remaining, you all are, you can move on. You're ingenious. You're incredible, because as Pam said, we disagree, but we don't become disagreeable. You know, we get mad about things, but we leave it at the table. We do not walk away. There were times we bargained and went on out and partied and had a little karaoke every now and then. So this is what is incredible. No other Board has been able to do what we've done. Not only that, but Dr. Jenkins under leadership with you all voting in, the Behavioral Center. You're incredible, because nobody, these children are not gonna be running all over the place. Mr. Morris has seen to it with his staff that these students are going to get the state of the art. They have always been thrown in old schools, old buildings, anywhere that the community have moved out, put them in there. That's not gonna happen now with Mr. Morris and Dr. Jenkins and her awesome team and the Facilities Department. I can't wait for you to see Magnolia and the Behavior Center for Gateway and Cherokee. This Board needs a round of applause for creating that atmosphere. One other thing, I think everybody said it, but as I stated before, I told Bill, I've watched the Chairman and his leadership, and I make no qualms about it. I thought he would make a great mayor. I really did. And we rallied our community around. He didn't believe me, but I'm just openly saying it in the public, we all voted for you. I hope that he hears me, okay? But the reason why, because we knew that he came out of the legislators. And he knew what that was like. But he did not know the difference in the School Board governance compared to the legislative governance. He was able to sit at his desk and dilly-out all the money and give it to whoever he wants. Couldn't do that here. He found out that he had to fight just as hard with the unitary status that what you do on the east side, this Chairman had to do it, what? On the west. And not only the west, but the north and the south. That took a lot, coming from somebody who was, and I say, "Party." Everybody knows it was party. We're non- Protestant up here, believe it or not. But you were able to change, and that's why I still say you would make a good governor or a good mayor or a good President of the United States. I would go that far. I would go that far. And if he doesn't, I already told Ms. Sablet, I'm gonna follow him to be there and keep him in shape. So I know he would be able to do it. But I feel that under his leadership, all the things he have gleaned over the time has just been extraordinary. He did the Blue Ribbon Panel with Daryl Flynn and Bill Sablet, marching hand in hand. I just say I would not have attended one of those stupid meetings. You don't let anybody come in and take over your School Board. They don't even know what they're talking about. Let's go and take over City Hall. Let's go over Christine, and congratulations to you. Let's take over the County Commission, but they will not come in here and run Orange County schools. And worked our staff to death. And after they did it, they saw that we had an outstanding staff with Board Services, with Executive Council that Dr. Jenkins served with. And then, let me tell you about this Board. You created a legal department. You did not mind it when we brought it in. I brought it up many times, got voted out, voted out, voted out. But then, when you saw the need, every department has a lawyer. And that never happened before. So you saw fit. So I want to say to Christine, I know that you're going to do well because of your commitment. I know that Pam is going to keep up doing what she's doing. Daryl knows how special she is to me. Y'all out there know Daryl is special to me, because she gave me Mr. Wright, she gave me Timber Creek, she gave me all of her schools, and allowed me to come in and open the door. That didn't happen when I got on this Board. She was, she made, I mean, she asked me to come to everything that they would do. We walked hand in hand. And I did not really receive that from, not this Board, not this Board. We ask everybody to come to everything we do. But the previous Boards, they didn't want you in that territory. Mr. Blocker even warned me, "Now, don't go over there unless you get permission." But nobody cared. If Nancy wanted to walk into mine, I'd walk into hers. She'd open her arm, Colbert'd walk in. It was just open arms. Joey always allowed me, you know, to come back and forth. That did not happen. This is the kind of camaraderie ship you need when you're up here. Daryl made a statement about Hamlet, and you don't really know how powerful that is. Hamilton, okay, y'all know I write everything down on the toilet paper and everything. But Daryl made that statement about winning is easy, but governing is harder. We are totally different. This Board is totally different. So Daryl knows her leadership, and I always say I have to give that digital to her. I talked to Dr. Jenkins the other day. I said, "Now, Dr. Jenkins, there's some little things we gotta fix. You know, with our little IT, I don't kinda like what's going on." And Daryl getting ready to leave, so we got to pull her back in to make sure she still be a public voice, because we can't put all these laptops out and don't have enough stuff to go with it. So I'm drafting Daryl to come back and make sure that this happens, and this is public comments, okay? Not making Joanna do it, because I know what that's like, sitting up here, you know, and not just being strong. But I think that's her baby, and I think she needs to not leave us with the baby until the baby grows up. And I think she needs to not leave us with the baby until the baby grows up. And the baby's not gonna grow up because, until next year when we go out to elementary school. So I really want to say. And to Nancy and Joey, you all, I can't wait to see what you're going to do. I got an idea what Joey is gonna do. But I wrote a note to Joey that I will give you tonight, each of you, y'all know I wrote a little note to each of you. I will give you tonight. And, and, and your father has always been in my heart for you. Because without your dad and your mom and the skills that they have given you, you can go anywhere. You can be what you want to do. And Nancy, even though you did not get the chair, guess what? God has something else in store for you that's gonna be bigger and better. So Bill, let me know what you're gonna do because I'm not leaving your side, all right? Thank you so very much, Mr. Chair. And I love my fellow board members. Thank you.
Cat, after that, I'm running for emperor of the galaxy.
Okay, I'll go with you.
You know, one thing I am going to miss is I have never worked with anybody in my life who can give you a butt whooping one moment, turn around and hug you and say, "I love you darling." Don't you know it, the next moment. And Cat Gordon, the line of the board. So we do have one presentation that I'd like to make here in a moment. But board members, you were each given a commemorative crystal vase with some words of thanks for your service to the citizens of Orange County. And I'm going to go to Dr. Jenkins here in, in a moment. But there is, I would like to say a few, one or two things. First of all, I would be remiss because people do watch this at home on TV. Every time I have a constituent come up and say, "I saw this happen in the board meeting," or that, I'm always pleasantly surprised. And I want to thank the taxpayers of Orange County. We live in a community where peoples of, of all walks of life, of all means, still make their neighborhood public school their number one education choice. And I feel so blessed to live in a community like that. And they've shown it at the ballot box, not once, not twice, but four times in the last 16 years with the passage of the half cent cell tax, the renewal of the half cent cell tax in 14, the passage of the one mil and the renewal of the, of the one mil two years ago. We are so blessed that our community steps up to the plate and supports us in that manner because so much of what we've accomplished as a team, and it's all been as a team of our teachers, our support staff, our parents, our community. But none of it would be possible if we didn't have the financial support of this community. So thank you taxpayers for supporting public education. Woody, I want to let you know on behalf of the board, I know I speak for all of us who are leaving, we've been so blessed to work with you. When I got elected to this position, I had a perception before I came in, and I was blessed that you were appointed to this position about a month or two months before I took office, that, that aside from perhaps Dr. Jenkins or Mr. Blocker at the time, the superintendent, the next most important person in, in our team up here would be the school board attorney. You've been phenomenal. You have brought so much to the table. Professionalism, objectivity, fair-mindedness. We've just been so blessed to have Woody Rodriguez as our school board attorney. I'm also gonna miss some of our fun times as well. Mrs. Robinson, I'm going to miss being drunk Santa again. I'm not sure half that room knows who that guy was last, last Christmas. But I'm also going to miss school board services and our annual holiday dinner. We're doing it again this year. And I would be remiss if I let this meeting, this part of our meeting end without thanking Deborah McGill, who's sitting over there, who has taken care of me for eight years, become a dear friend in every sense of the word, a close personal friend. And Deborah, I'm going to miss getting to talk to you every day, but we'll be talking, I'm sure, weekly still from here on out. Thank you for all you've done for me. We had some wonderful gifts that we all got. I brought two of them tonight. One, I just want to say thank you. Where is, where is our folks from Orange Technical?
They are here.
This, I think, did we all get one? This is the coolest thing in the world. I just want to say it is a picnic basket that's a cooler at the same time. I thought it was really cool. And I wanted to also point out, and this is, I think, probably my favorite keepsake. This came from, yeah, this, we all got this. This came from Dr. McGowan and her team in school board enrollment services or student enrollment services. And I don't know if y'all can see it out there. And I broke the frame. I dropped it on the way over. If you're wondering why it's not in the frame it came in, it was in the frame. It says, "Student enroll," and we all got one of these, "Student enrollment, school board transfer. Congratulations. We are pleased to inform you that your request to transfer from the Orange, from the school board of Orange County Public Schools has been approved." Says, "To Bill Sublett, date November 7, 2018. Current location, OCPS Ron Blocker Educational Leadership Center. Requested location, return to sanity." Below that, it says, "Directions: retain this transfer at all times with one form of ID. When approached with questions regarding public education within Orange County Public Schools, present this letter and state 'retired.' No further action is required. Effective immediately." Thank you, Dr. McGowan, for this. So let me close with this. We have also been blessed, and I agree with something Ms. Flynn, I believe, said, but I've heard every member of this board say it. When I ran for this position eight years ago, I said over and over as part of my standard stump speech that the single most important decision that I would make as chairman of this board with my colleagues on the board would be to hire a new superintendent of public education. Because our long-serving superintendent, Ron Blocker, was a tough act to follow and a terrific superintendent was retiring. And he, he really blessed us in the literal sense of the word blessed with Dr. Jenkins because he set the table by bringing her back from Charlotte Mecklenburg to become our next superintendent. And I think it's probably one of the wisest decisions that this board has ever made because she has taken us to new heights. Our reputation, I think, has never been more sterling within the community than it has been for the last five or six years. And it shows at the ballot box with the tax renewals. So Dr. Jenkins, our board has a small memento we would like to give you, the outgoing board members in our current board. We have this plaque. And I'm gonna have to put on my glasses because I can't read anything any longer without them. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. I think one of our other board members, Ms. Cadel, said that a little bit earlier. So, Dr. Jenkins, it's been a true honor, a pleasure serving with you these last seven years as superintendent and eight years in total for me and 16 years for Ms. Cadel and some of the other members. Thank you. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And then I want to share with everyone what the lovely vases actually say they are engraved. First, let me say thank you to each of you who are leaving us. Public service, I understand, is tremendous sacrifice, not always thanked. And sometimes certainly receives some abuse. But I want to thank you personally for your commitment to the children of Orange County Public Schools. And I want to thank your families because they have sacrificed as well, letting you be a part. So thanks go to your family as well. You leave behind a tremendous legacy here in Orange County Public Schools and changed lives for 213,000 children. It's quite a task. You leave behind some board members who will miss you dearly and this superintendent who will miss you and treasure you along with the rest of my staff. So I've known you as board members, supervisors, partners, colleagues, always friends. And as you depart us, please know we will always call you friend. And I will not say goodbye. I will say, "See you soon. So long." And here is what the actual, the chairman received, the beautiful crystal gavel that is engraved. And the other four board members received engraved vases with beautiful flowers in them. We want you to remember us as you replace those flowers in days to come. Here's what the engraving says. Present it with deep appreciation to board member's name for a dedicated service on the school board of Orange County. And so for Christine Moore, it says 2008 through 2018. For Nancy Robinson, it says 2008 through 2018. For Darrell Flynn, it says 2006 through 2018. And for Joey Cadel, 2002 through 2018. Thanks for the memories. And Godspeed to each of you.
It seems so anticlimactic to go into our regular meeting now. Well, let's go ahead and go into our last regular meeting for five of us. We do not have any strategic plan update tonight. I don't believe we have any newly appointed administrators to recognize tonight. So, Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda?
Two changes. Chairman withdraw item 6.03 regarding a student expulsion and then move from the personnel agenda 5.01, a dismissal, initials DS, to non-consent item 1701.
All right, the chair finds cause to amend the agenda as suggested by the superintendent. Can I entertain a motion to do so? It's been moved. Is there a second? It's seconded. All those in favor of amending the agenda as suggested, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, like sign, show the agenda adopted and as amended. We do have some public hearings tonight. Dr. Jenkins, let me turn that over to you for 3.01 through 3.03.
Thank you, Chairman. These are board policies that have already gone through the process. This is the final action to be taken by the board. Item 3.01, policy IHAM, local school wellness. Item 3.02, board policy IME on assemblies. And then 3.03, board policy IGC on pilot project. Cabinet meetings took place on October 15th. Notification went to our unions on October 9th. Publication date was October 14th. Rural Development Workshop, November 1st. And now at our final school board meeting on November 13th, we will receive your action. Per our parliamentary and chairman, you may take up all three in one motion.
All right. Has any member of the public come to provide us with any comment regarding the proposed changes to school board policy IHAM, IME, or IGC? I don't believe I have any speaker cards on those. I would like to point out that by the time a board policy change gets to us at the board table at this point, there doesn't seem to be a lot of questions or comments. It's because we've already gone through a rural development workshop on it and oftentimes a work session as well. Board members, any questions or comments on the proposed changes? Can I entertain a motion to adopt the proposed changes as reflected in agenda items 3.01 through 3.03? It's been moved by Mrs. Robinson. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Flynn. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? All right, all those in favor of the proposed board policy changes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show them adopted. All right, we are now on our consent agenda. We do have a number of speakers on our consent agenda. First one is 4.01, which is designating November 14, 2018 as National Education Support Professionals Day. And I'd like to welcome at this time up to the podium a friend of ours, Mr. Ron Pollard, the president of OESPA. Welcome, Mr. Pollard.
Well, thank you Chairman Sublett, Superintendent Jenkins, and all of the school board members. I just want to take this opportunity, and I want to say it right, so I'm gonna look at it. As president of the Orange Education Support Professionals, OESP, as you know it, which is the exclusive bargaining agent for our classified employees here in OCPS, I want to thank Dr. Jenkins and the school board, who are our employer, employers, for embracing the important work that our ESPs do. And our ESPs are what we call our classified workers, our educational support professionals. The important work that our ESPs do to assist and protect our most valuable asset, which is our students. This is National Education Week with tomorrow being National ESP Day. So again, I want to thank you all for this recognition. And I would like to recognize my team who are here, my lovely wife, Sophia, my Slina Rivera, my right hand, and Tamika Hampton, also who assists me too. We just want to give y'all a thank you. It's a great honor when your employer recognizes the important work that you do every day. So, thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Pollard. And Sophia, thank you for lending him to us. He's been a joy to work with and your entire team has as well. So thank you. All right, we have on agenda item 4.02, which is recognizing National School Psychology Week. Nicholas Cutro. Mr. Cutro, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you Chairman Sublett, Superintendent Jenkins, and all school board members for recognizing School Psychology Awareness Week. School psychologists are excited about the district's emphasis on student mental health and the recognition that mental health is not only correlated with student achievement, but plays an important causal role in school performance. I believe that school psychologists play a vital role in improving school achievement. School psychologists are specially trained to work within the educational system, trained as a practitioner in both psychology and education. As school-based mental health professionals, school psychologists work to remove barriers, prevent problems, identify strengths and weaknesses, problem solve with teams, and monitor students who are in need of remediation or enrichment. School psychologists are trained to understand academic, behavioral, emotional, and mental health functioning in the academic setting. I would like to take a second to recognize the OCPS school psychologists in the audience. Please stand so that we can acknowledge the individuals who make sure that our students and families are healthy and successful. I would also like to thank Dr. Schuler, Mary Bridges, and our administrative supervisors, Carl, Lisa, and Julianne for their leadership, advocacy, and support. So thank you. As president of the Florida Association of School Psychologists, we are available to support the school board of Orange County and Orange County Public Schools in their initiative to focus on the whole child. Children who have supports to be physically safe and emotionally healthy will be better equipped to achieve at school and in life. School psychologists know that what is done to children, they will do to society. Thank you again for recognizing School Psychology Awareness Week.
Ms. Colbert.
Thank you. I just really, in particular, want to thank you all for what you do. The role that you play has never been more important in our students' lives and in our teachers' lives. I had a great talk with one of my high school principals today, and he has great concern. He's never seen so many just burdensome issues with our students. And so we, we count on you to help in the care of that whole child and recognize the commitment that you have to our children. And I just want to thank you for your work and let you know how important it is to all of us, to all of our children, to our entire school community. So thank you for choosing this profession and for the dedication you have to our children.
Amen. Also, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you all. You know, it's, it's sort of a sad commentary in society today that I think the whole nation has become aware of how important school psychologists are and the role that you play in education. But you really do play a critical role. And we've just been so fortunate to have your services. We've been fortunate to be able to increase our staffing in that regard of late. We've also been fortunate to have your commitment. My own children have been the beneficiaries of your work, so I've seen it firsthand. And so much of the focus is, is put upon the safety aspect nowadays because of what's happened. And so much of the focus is put upon the safety aspect nowadays because of what's happened around the country. But we want you to know, we know you do so much more, whether it's in the testing arena, whether it's in the placement arena, whether it's in the counseling arena. You just play an absolutely critical role. So, thank you on behalf of the Board for everything you do for our children. It's much appreciated. Dr. Jenkins?
I would just add my thanks to our school psychologists during this special time of recognition. I think it's also important to note that you play a vital role as a resource to all of our classroom teachers as well, all of our instructional staff. The challenge we put out earlier this year, because there's so many disturbing things going on around the country, was that every employee be on the lookout for children who are struggling with difficult issues. And so, classroom teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, anyone who believed they saw or noted a child that was struggling, we asked them to make that extra effort to let students know there is help available. And while our teachers are not as well-trained as you are, they can recognize troubled children. And so, we've always made an assumption that those efforts would be made on behalf of our children. But nowadays, I think Board members, more than ever, everyone has to be on the lookout for our young people and what they might be struggling with. And so, not only to the school psychologists, but to all of our employees who are watching out for 213,000 students, commendations are due. But for those of you who will get the referrals, because we promised employees that their role is simply to say, "There's always someone you can talk to," and then that they would get them to the help that they need. And so, for all of the handoffs you've taken this year and will continue to take, thank you again on behalf of our children, our families, and our administrators.
Thank you for coming down. And it's a school night, so you're not offending us if you have to go at this time. Otherwise, you can stick around and watch the rest of the proceedings. Thank you for coming down and letting us recognize you. All right. Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Rodriguez, do I have some other speaker cards down there?
Yes.
Okay.
1701.
Oh, okay. On 1701. All right. Board members, we have three speakers on Agenda Item 5.02, which is on the teacher retention bonus. First was Stephanie Gittar. Ms. Gittar, welcome. And I hope I pronounced that correctly. If I didn't, I apologize. Of course. Yeah, I have three speakers, Stephanie Gittar, Ms. Cara Yule, and then Ms. Diana Moore. Diana, welcome.
Thank you. That would help us immensely. We're part one and part two, so we're doing a little on the fly.
Okay. And before I get admonished by legal, I've been forgetting to say, please start with your name and address.
Here, Cara Yule, 9504 Lake Douglas Place. First, I would like to sincerely thank all of you for your leadership and recognize your service to our community. We're not here to speak against the teacher retention bonus, but to add that we believe there are other things that could be done at the district level to vastly increase retention and teacher satisfaction, as well as the education climate for our community as a whole. So, I'd like to share my thoughts from the perspective of parents. I spent the first two years of my children's grade school education in a dark about how the whole thing worked, despite having gone to public school all my life. I thought that teachers did whatever was needed in the classroom, that PTA was solely for fundraising, and that all communication and directives came from the top down. As they say, ignorance is bliss. After Parkland, I started to question the role and goals of our public school system. I thought a lot about the value of social-emotional learning and how it's pushed aside in favor of test scores and academic rigor. I wondered, at the end of the day, to whom should the school system be accountable? This year's School Board election has shown us that parents, teachers, and voters at large are ready for change in our district. The couple of themes that I've heard are to rebuild the trust and partnership between parents, teachers, and administrators, to focus on social-emotional learning, and to restore autonomy to teachers. So, first, to rebuild the trust. It seems like the silos of parents, teachers, and administration are intentionally kept separate. To integrate them would require more communication and possibly major changes in the way that education is delivered. Teachers aren't able to be honest and open with parents about the demands placed on them by administration because it would be perceived as oppositional. For this reason, many parents have no idea what's involved in doing the work of teaching. Second, to focus on social-emotional learning. I think that as parents, many of us get sucked into the idea that test scores and A ratings indicate the best schools. Families move to neighborhoods specifically for the A-rated schools. Parents seek out high schools with lots of AP and honors courses. But as a friend of mine said, "I got my kindergarten son's report card and I saw his grades for math and ELA. But where's the info on if he's sharing and getting along with his peers?" We've become so laser-focused on grades and achievement that we're missing the point. Our first job as a community should be to raise good humans. I'll take a school that nurtures my child's spirit over one that improves his test grades any day of the week. Furthermore, an increasing body of evidence shows that academic achievement closely follows a strong social-emotional foundation. I've heard repeatedly that guidance counselors and support staff get bogged down with administrative tasks and don't have adequate time to spend on either guiding or counseling. We've spent millions of dollars on educational software, which incidentally has no research to support that it creates learning gains. What if we took those millions and instead spent them on staff that could provide the individualized support that kids need in order to thrive? I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie.
My name's Stephanie Gittar. It's 10228 Stratford Point Avenue. And to continue with the last point, to restore teacher autonomy. Teachers are professionals and they should be afforded the autonomy that is given to other professionals. I've had young teachers tell me time and time again that they went to school to become an educator because they wanted to leave a lasting impact on young minds. Many tell me that they have been inspired by their own parents or teachers from their childhood. They enter the field excited about all these great innovative ideas they've learned in college. Then they get to the classroom and it's nothing that they expected. There's data to collect and tests to administer, but there isn't much time for nurturing students and addressing individual needs. There isn't time to get to know students deeply and recognize their hurts and fears before they turn into something bigger. That wounds and disillusioned teachers enough that they're simply walking away from their profession. In closing, teachers aren't going into the business of teaching to make money. They do it because they want to grow kids' souls, expand their horizons, and enable each child to see his or her own potential. How can they do that if they're constantly being asked to do more administrative work, attend more meetings, document more data? In the process of evaluating and monitoring our kids' education, we've taken the human aspect out completely. Many teachers are also being encouraged or perhaps required to use standardized curriculum at standardized times of the day. The standardization leaves little time to capture the moments so many of us remember from our own education, stopping to observe a caterpillar outside, throwing an impromptu play to further integrate learning concepts, or perhaps reading a much-loved novel to young readers. I think back on my time in graduate school, when we learned about innovations like New York City's full-service schools and Boston's School Choice Program. Some recent Googling confirmed that innovation in education is still alive and well. We just need to work as a team to do what's best for our children. All it takes is true partnership between parents, educators, and administration. My hope is that our newly-elected leadership hears this message as a resounding call that accountability should be to the parents, the students, and the teachers. I always tell my children not to come to me with a problem without also having some solutions in mind. So, with that said, a few suggestions on where to start include to hold truly anonymous listening sessions with parents, teachers, and students. These should be broad in scope, but then should dive deeper into those issues that seem to come up and again and again. Don't write them off. There's no shame in exploring why something isn't working or how it could become better. That's how we learn, right? Start thinking about what limitations are truly placed on our district by federal or state mandates, and then figure out how to innovate within those broad confines. Research innovation in other school districts and evaluate whether those concepts can be applied locally. Consider reallocation of resources to high-return on investment areas. This should be based on evidence and best practices. Thank you for your time. We hope that this is just the first of many conversations about how we can improve our schools. At the end of the day, we all want the same thing, for our students to be challenged and supported so that they can reach their greatest potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittar, Ms. Yule, Ms. Moore.
Diana Moore, 8301 Buena Vista Woods Boulevard here, speaking to the Agenda Item. I'd like to stand before you and deliver some news from your friends in Palm Beach County. Palm Beach County just passed their referendum. And I don't know if you heard about what they decided to do with it. This was just on Tuesday. They decided that they would give a retention bonus to teachers who are in their first through fifth year of $1,000. Six through 10 years, they're going to get $5,000 each. And any teachers that have 10-plus years are going to get $10,000 each. I wanted to bring that up because they just passed it and it hasn't even come in yet, but they have given the promise to their teachers for four years, four years that they're going to do that. Now, Orange County passed a 1 mil eight years ago with the promise that they would retain highly-qualified teachers. It's right on the flyer that's passed out to all of our taxpayers and citizens who voted on it. And I attended a presentation recently by Mr. Scott Howitt, where he stated that the amount of money that was coming in from the 1 mil was less than $20 million. Well, I wrote and got the public records request, and it was actually over $32 million we brought in last year in the 1 mil revenue, in one year. So, that's because our property tax, our property values have gone up. So, I would like to ask the Board, and I know there's going to be some transition here, to consider looking at upping that bonus or adding it to salaries for the teachers if you truly want to retain them. Now, on the Board docs, you have listed that this bonus is not only going to teachers, it's going to administrators, classified personnel, food service managers, and technical folks. And what I want to say is, I think that is absolutely great that you are rewarding all employees. But it does not work to give the teachers a message that you value us and want to retain teachers in our profession when you give everyone the same amount. And so, I ask for you to look at this bonus, return to the bargaining table, and talk to each other and to the community members, and maybe do, as several of our teachers have asked, put out a survey, talk to teachers about what's going on. Because there was a comment made at the last School Board meeting, when the letter that was written by one of our teachers in the back made it to the Washington Post, there was a comment made that she's just one out of 13,000 teachers. And I know that that did not send a message to our teachers that they were valued, their input was valued. And so, there are several teachers here today standing in the back in silence because of that comment. There are several teachers that feel the way she does. She has resigned and moved on to another county. And today in my school, a kindergarten teacher announced that because she's not getting paid for her master's degree, she's leaving to go back to New Jersey. There are a lot of these stories that are going on in the news, and there are a lot of them that are going on in Orange County. I just hope that you will consider looking at the message that's sent from that dais and from the bargaining that happens each time we go to the table. Thank you. You should have a copy over there that I sent you, and you have it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Rodriguez, do we have any other speakers?
Mr. Chair, just the ones we have are for Item 17.01.
Okay. We always love it when we have public participation, so I want to thank all of you for coming down on this Tuesday night and taking time out of your evenings to provide support and of those who did, provide us with public comment and testimony on these issues. Thank you very much. All right. Board members, I believe that's everything on the consent agenda. Can I entertain a motion to adopt it?
Certainly.
It's been moved by Ms. Cadel, seconded by Ms. Moore. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. Thank you again for coming down.
Report, Chairman.
All right. District General Counsel report. Before I go to the District General Counsel, let me say that I conducted the General Counsel's review. And Board members, I want you to know that, and I hope I have the number right, Rudy, I failed to write it down before I came to the meeting. Out of a possible 140 points, he scored 139 out of 140 points on his evaluative instrument. Just shows how overwhelmingly happy we are with his services to this Board and to this district. So, congratulations, Mr. Rodriguez.
I gave him high ratings.
And I think we'll retain you.
Okay, now, you announced it last time, so.
Yeah.
I gave him high ratings.
Not sure. I think Dr. Jenkins still holds the record, but you know, you're close. Okay.
Almost.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Rodriguez, let me go to you for your report now.
Well, first of all, thank you to all Board members for taking the time, especially for those of you on the way out. And I appreciate and take to heart all of the comments. The evaluation instrument that Ms. Gordon devised a number of years back when I started still serves its purpose. And for those that are the incoming Board members, understand I start with a clean slate, have no expectations of making those kind of numbers in the first year, but I hope to earn your trust, as I have with this Board. But more importantly, what it means is that my contract has one more year left, obviously, but I do appreciate the feedback I get from each and every one of you, and I'm always open to that feedback. We did have a county commission meeting this afternoon. Part of the reason I missed some of the activities this afternoon were Ms. Cobert and I were attending and saw that the county commission approved not one, but two changes to land uses, which will allow us to close on two significant pieces of property to bring some high schools. One for East River and expansion of their property, and one for Cypress Creek, which will get some well-needed relief. Ms. Laura Kelly, who I think is on her way home, listening in the car somewhere on her way back home, she did an excellent job, as did Julie Salvo, and so, we very much feel appreciative of their efforts. But, Mr. Chair, I have to say, if I could take a moment of personal privilege, and I'm not going to push my button, but I am going to go off script here for a moment.
Oh, wait a minute. You've been taking lessons from him.
To show you my appreciation for this Board, and I hope, Mr. Chair, you know that I've known you for some time, but I'm going to tell you that imitation is the greatest source of flattery. So, I'm going to steal some of your favorite lines over the years. First of all, Mr. Chair, back when I was in the legislature, and some of you may recall, I was in the legislature.
I was calling it out. I didn't want to hear that word.
I was, albeit on the staff side. I did not get to stick around and see how the sausage was made as often as you did. But over the last eight years, you and this Board have made plenty of sausage. And for those watching on TV, that means policies. It doesn't mean we actually made sausage up here. Some of those policies were more contentious than others, but I think as a Board, you took the time to always question and ask of our staff. So, I don't want you to walk away without a memento of your time on the Board, Mr. Chair. And I know you've received the gavel and some other precious items. So, as a token of my appreciation to remind you of all your hard work on this Board, I'd like to present you with the Vienna sausage container.
I made your dinner. I'm going to give him two of those scars.
It's the best dinner I've had all year.
He's not done.
I'm not quite done now. Come on now.
You're going to have to get up again. Oh, wait. He's not done.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Gordon is the Parliament here, and I want to hold the floor for just one more minute if I could. And, Mr. Chair, while we recognize our new administrators, I know that we have been told on a few occasions what you think it means to you. And I think what you've told us repeatedly is it means trust. And I think what the voters of Orange County have said resoundingly this past year about this Board as a whole and the work you've done with an 84% vote on the mil was one word, and that word is trust. So, you should all applaud yourselves, whether you're on the Board or leaving this Board, and our efforts, because it means that the community trusts us to use these funds accordingly to be the top producer of successful students in the nation. And I think we do that as a proud parent of two children in public schools. I know all the good work our teachers do at whatever level, whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school. But finally, Mr. Chair, because it is a school night, I am going to keep my remarks short. But I think you and your colleagues have certainly earned some of the well-deserved ice cream that you encourage your parents to seek out after each meeting. However, my ethics compliance officer is in the back, and she and I would agree that it would be more appropriate for you to be provided with your ice cream under these bright lights of the sunshine and not outside this boardroom. So, you get to pick your flavor on the way out and take it home.
Oh, it's even cooler. He's got a cooler on here.
In all seriousness, it has been a pleasure to serve, and I have appreciated serving. This is probably one of the, not one of the, it is one of the highlights of my professional career. I am blessed with an incredible staff, support from the Superintendent, and able to work with great people. When we get to keep great staff, it's great, but having a Board that always seems to work well together. If you guys were Osceola County, I'm not sure it could have lasted eight years during some of their years. But you guys, well, let me tell you, Ms. Gordon, sometimes your Board down there acts a little squirrely, right? Well, no, no. But as a Board, you do work very well together, and it shows. And I think we've heard a lot of that this evening. So, thank you all, Board members, for your service, and I know we will continue to interact in the years to come.
Ms. Cadel.
Well, before...
Well, before I say some words about Mr. Rodriguez, tonight, we answered the dream of everybody, including Mr. Morris, who has children at East River High School. They have not had enough practice fields. For five years, I have heard that we can't do what we need to do, so when you talk about equity at high schools, if you don't have room for them to practice, you can't really have all the teams that our other high schools can do. So, to Mr. Morris and to Laura Kelly and everyone who was involved in it, thank you. The parents and the community are forever grateful. Your staff, on the night that the 528 was closed, and it took me an hour and a half to get from this office out to East River for that community meeting, and some of your staff was stuck in that traffic, but we answered, we answered the questions of the community, and that extra meeting meant that we would go through the process over at the county and be able to deliver that. So, one of the things, you know, I talked about what I was most proud of, but the fact there's going to be some practice fields there for the children of East River is another highlight. To you, Mr. Rodriguez, I think I was chairman of the board when we hired you, it was one of the most interesting times of leading. Thank you to May Ann Downs, who sat right next to me and kept saying, "It will be okay. Just look at the questions." May Ann did such a good job. I mean, it was, because, and it was back when we had the blue, the blue school boardroom, and we were like in the middle of the hole doing the interviews. I had conversations with you, because when we were negotiating your contract, because I was chairman of the board, I kind of said, "Here are the things that the board needs to know. We want to know where you are when your car is not there. We want to know what community organizations you're serving on, and are you doing it personally or are you representing Orange County Public Schools?" And we wanted you to be who you are. We, you know, some people said, "Ah, he doesn't have education experience," and I'm like, "Yeah, but boy, he's got government experience," and you can learn the education experience, but that government and keeping us out of trouble and all that you've done, and even when we're all up for reelection, we still call him, "He doesn't represent Bill Cowles anymore," but it's like, "Woody, what does this mean, and what does that mean, and is it a recount?" And so, Angie can talk to that, because she was like, "What happens now?" So, thank you for always taking care of us, and thank you for being an advocate for public schools. And, you know, this is a man who coaches the chess club at his middle school, because the children had it at their elementary school, they didn't have it at their middle school, and he said, "We're going to have it at my middle school," and he does it. I have told him over and over again, Ella Grace, she's going to make her living doing videos, so you guys just better nurture it and know, she's probably not going to be an attorney, but she'll tell the attorney's stories through videos, so.
She plays one on TV.
Huh?
She'll play one on TV.
Yeah, so, Woody, thanks. Thanks for doing what you've done, and, you know, one of the things that I remember different staff members said, when we have a problem, we know Woody's there, or he has assigned attorneys to take care of it. And you have the rotating thing that, you know, you've always got an attorney on call for us. So, thank you for taking the leadership. We wanted you to go to FSBA, because we thought you could learn from the other school board attorneys, and you have done that. So, for all of those dreams we had, all of those years ago that we hired you, thank you so much.
Mrs. Robinson.
I'm going to add on to a lot of what Ms. Cadel said. I don't only get the privilege of having Mr. Rodriguez as my general counsel, but he's one of my constituents. I get him in my district six schools, and he's dad extraordinary too, just like Ms. Cadel said. And I just have to point out, after the election, August 28th, and I got emails, or I got letters, or whatever, I got people upset or sad that I didn't win and all these things, the best one I got, I got a note, a handwritten note, which is so rare these days, at my home address from someone telling me the best thing I did in the 10 years as a school board member was hire Woody Rodriguez. And I told, I was so thrilled to be able to tell him that at his assessment, and that's the trust and the respect you have brought to this position and for the district, and thank you. Thank you for being my friend, thank you for having great kids, I can't wait to watch and continue to see what they get to do. So, congratulations, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, we are on, yeah, Mrs. Robinson, sure.
And I meant to say earlier, I don't believe when I gave my remarks earlier tonight, I don't believe my district six new incoming school board member was here, but Karen Castor Dental is in the house, and she's going to do a great job representing district six, so thank you to the, to the voters of Orange County for choosing Karen, she's going to do a fabulous job. Thank you. Yeah, Christine called her out.
Melissa's there.
Melissa is also with us. Christine, you want to recognize your replacement?
So, I was using this as your replacement.
Yeah, I mentioned you, but not formally, so congratulations, Melissa Byrd, and we actually live about a half a mile from each other and hope to continue a real strong relationship, which will be great for the district, and welcome aboard, and I know you'll do a wonderful job as well.
And Ms. Moore, we haven't said tonight, congratulations on your victory. We're so proud of you. Really, so very, very proud of you. Northwest Orange is fortunate to have you, and all I can, no, seriously, on the commission, and all I can say is, Ms. Castor Dental, back when we were in the legislature.
She's going to be saying that.
Keeps a tradition alive, Karen. In my defense, that ended after one year, Ms. Cadel made sure of it. All right, we have a committee report, Mrs. Gordon.
All righty, thank you so much. It's, it's off, okay. And I do salute the new school board members, I think they'll learn about me, I don't speak to you, I don't know you, I don't know anything about sunshine until we are up here. So, I do not collaborate and mix and mingle and all that. The only time I did was because Nancy dragged us into Edgewater, and we enjoyed doing that, you know, for a while, but I tried to follow the sunshine law. So, don't ever think that I'm not wanting to, you know, thing mangle, I'm too old to do anything but sit in this seat and get things done, and I will do that with you collectively, and I'm letting you know at the board table, so that's why. They'll tell you, I don't go everywhere they go, I don't do everything they do, so I don't want you to think I'm not being social, I'm saying it out in the public, it's just my mode and the way I operate.
So, the secret is to have a pina colada waiting, and you'll have Mrs. Gordon there.
No, no, no.
Frozen pina colada.
Yes, you've got it, and it has to be from a certain place, and my kids know I don't put any alcohol in it. Except, so you see, you all are going to have fun, Melissa, Amy, Karen, and you guys are going to enjoy it, you're going to enjoy up here, because you're serving and you ran and you wanted to win, but I'm happy about Christine, but it's not over yet, because I, we're going to take this elsewhere, because there are additional things to come that we're going to do tonight that you all will do later on. But I do want to say that we do get to travel, and each one of us decided where we pretty much wanted to go, and we had a chairman that did not stop us, and if we said we wanted to go here or do this, and we had a chairman that told us one time, "We're going everywhere." He just signed us up and told us we were going to go, and we were very rebellious, because we all decided not to go, but he went by himself, and that Rick, well, it was two, Rick and Tim, and I'm saying it because they are out there, and Tim tried to, he keeps in touch with me. But the main thing I'm saying is that I hope that when you come on this board, that you will get to do things that you would like to do as a team that would help. Everything we did up here, even if it was Darrell's initiative, or Christine's initiative, or Pam's initiative, or Ms. Colbert's, or Ms. Robinson, or Joey, we all took a look at it, nobody came in with their own little stuff, and everybody said, "Let's see if it's going to help the kids, and if it's going to help the kids and the students and the teachers." Believe it or not, we looked out for that, but children's first, and we know that the teachers are there, I'm a teacher, but there's easy, it's real easy. Sometime, when you get a little bit of money, Ms. Castor, when you get a little bit of money, you have to, it can't go but so far, and I hope that your expertise can show that, okay? So, it's a little different, like Darrell said tonight, winning, and it's a little different in governing. So, I'm here to let you know, every project that you heard that we did, we did it as a team. I hope you all are hearing that. I will leave you all up here by yourself to fight your battle. I'm serious, because you've got to come with an attitude, not an individual, we all had our individual projects, but every one of us get the glory for the project. That's what it's all about. But we know who initiated those projects, and we give respect to that superintendent, that general counsel, team, the chairman, and the board, and the chairman has already left us some mandates of what he would like to see happen, and there's no reason why some of that cannot take place. So, my report is going places and bringing it back. I learned that on Mr. Blocker, we also, 19 people from Orange County, Dr. Jenkins sent a dynamic staff. I mean, these people, Mr. Bearden, Dr. Vasquez, Dr. Ella Thompson, oh my God, I'm going to leave out, but if I leave it out, you know I always bring back a written report. Please go in board docs, because Nancy Canover put all of this together for us, we had the Urban Library Council, we got to meet with them, I attended that, the Best Practice in Urban Public Education Procedures, I went to that and had a ball, the Managing for Results in America's Great City Schools, went to that, and Nancy had to sit in Dr. Jenkins' long meeting, and I think that was a good experience for her, okay? The one that touched me the most was the students to speak out on the election at the national town hall meeting. It tore my heart up, because a member of the Iowa Board of Education was the moderator, but he was a student, and I have heard that some people want to do that, but I want people to know, we have done that in the past. I ran on that, and it didn't last in Orange County, because our meetings lasted too long, and these children had to go home and get FCAT done, and it wasn't working well, so those ideas I'm hearing. But these students ran the whole thing, and Meiling Hosheng of Broward County, Florida, was one of the shooting survivors, and my gosh, it was just incredible. So, that report is in there, you all got to read some of this stuff, it is unbelievable. There's some more. I did get into the three L, learning, language, and literacy, and the one that touched me the most was creating systematic change with parents and family engagement. I missed that part. Pam and I was trying to get to it, but they were supposed to be first, no, last, and they end up being first. But Dr. Kathy Shula, Dr. Ella Thompson, I don't really want to leave anybody out, Dr. Marie Vasquez, Dr. Porter, my God, who else?
Dr. Bixler.
Oh, my God, even Eileen, my goodness, our general, one of our attorneys, who else?
Dr. Bixler.
Yeah, oh, my God, Bixler, oh, my Lord, he was good, and then I told you, the one that blew my mind was this gentleman who just started with the team, and I think that's Bearden. Dr. Jenkins, he was, Dr. Jenkins was supposed to present, but somebody took her place, but you really need to read the report, Creating Systematic Change with Parents and Family Engagement, that's right up my line, that was just, the ladies, help me with who did that? Oh, gosh, it was a title one, Dr. Jenkins, who's your title one, people? My mind is getting, Dr. Shula was in it, but it was, I hope I didn't leave up anybody, Dr. Shula, did I leave up? There were 19 people there, and all of them were presenting, all of them were presenting, and let me tell you, everybody was running behind them, talking to them, trying to get information from them, I just thought, it's the best, so I'm hoping that Nancy did copy it, and the one that I did attend it was Executive Summary on Catalyzing Change in High School Mathematics. I think that was Dr. Porter. I didn't even know he knew anything about math. I just thought, is he in the audience? Look at your stuff, at your bad self. I'll tell you, Dr. Jenkins, I say, "You need to let them present to us before they go national," because it was out of sight. Kim Gilbert, Director of Federal Programs, Sean Sanchez, and there was Aponte, I think she was there too. Lord, if I forgot anybody, Dr. Jenkins, I have been to Council of Great City Schools since 2000 with Ron Blocker and Susan and Tim and all of that, but I want you to know with Dr. Ella Thompson and all of what they did there, this, I mean, Marie, you would have thought Marie Vasquez was superintendent of the whole Council of Great City Schools. She ran around from one room to another, and I was like a little duck running right behind her, because you know what, I love to see what we do, because I'll come back and let you all know if they did it right, but they were just amazing. People would ask me, "Who are they?", and then, and they would exchange cards, but you guys are just awesome, this is some good stuff, I've already passed it on to all my friends in Atlanta, they wanted to know who you were, and Omaha, Nebraska, they wanted to know, so, you know, you probably will be getting calls, but if not, they already have gotten most of this offline. So, I want to thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for allowing Pam and I, Pam, who, it was just you and I this time, along with your 18 and 19 people, and of course, you know, when you are not there, those superintendents just feel lost. Where is she? Is she not coming? I thought she was going to present, we wanted to be there. So, you are well-loved at the Council of Great City Schools, and, oh, and then the Jones High Choir, yes, she received the Queen Green, is it Queen Green Award?
Queen Smith.
Queen Smith Award, which was just outstanding, and her comments just tore the house up. But I think the one that tore up everybody was the president of the council, Larry. Larry is a school board member down in Miami, and he is the council chair, and Larry did things at that council that I've never seen done before, and everybody just went out with a loving attitude and everything, so, you know, I do encourage you to go, and you get to know so many board members, you know, the top urban schools, 278, I think it is, Dr. Jenkins, is it not? Okay, and I'm sure, I'm sure Ms. Gou, how many are they? Seventy, top urban school district in the nation, and to just see the love that they have for each other, but Ms. Gou, you attended a couple I did not get to, so you may want to just add that, but thank you, Mr. Chair, it's just been fun doing this and learning, and I'm passing it on to the different department chairs like I normally do, okay? And I would bring Mr. Morris something back, say, "How you all billing schools there?", so, they always beat, got them beat, so sometime I just look at the picture and thank them, so I thank you. Pam, you went to a couple I didn't make.
Ms. Gou?
There were a couple, and I will add to Ms. Gordon's report on that, there was one on community support, we do a lot of it, but they had some really good things to share in Milwaukee, and I would share in that, but I had pushed my button to thank the board, and especially Joey Cadel and Angie Gallo for coming to Gen Wow last week. It was, I couldn't speak for three days, because I couldn't put into words how to describe the impact this event had on 400 of our young ladies and 150 women from our community. the impact this event had on 400 of our young ladies and 150 women from our community. I still am having trouble articulating it, but it was phenomenal. And as Ms. Gordon said, it's because of great partnerships we have with our board, with the superintendent and the staff, that that was possible. And I truly believed we changed lives that day. And I'm getting texts even this week from young ladies and women from our community about how they want to get involved, stay engaged, and do more. So it was more than a home run, and I just hope we can evolve this even more and keep it going. It was really phenomenal. Take some time to look at the video and the pictures when you get a chance from that event, because it was just spectacular. And I want to be able to touch every high school girl, as we do, with something like this. So thank you very much for that support, and thank you for giving up the day that you all gave up to spend with these young ladies.
Ms. Cadel.
Okay, so bring us in for a landing for the last time. How's that? That was the one thing you forgot. So I'm going to bring us in for a landing, and I'm going to make a cheap plug, because some of you will know that I was president of Florida School Boards Association back in 2012 and 2013. Some of my very best friends, I made those relationships at FSBA, because I could have frank talks with them about issues I was struggling with, because it would never break the sunshine. And to Daryl, and to Nancy, and to Christine, Stan Schmidt called me today, and he said, if the traffic wasn't so, my science, he called me, he called himself my science project. So I had to tell the staff, as someone calls and says, "I'm Joey's science project. Could I please speak to her?" Know that it was okay, that it was Stan. But, you know, he called and he said, "You all were such good friends to him, to him." And so he wanted us to know that he wished everyone the best. But the time you spend at FSBA and the relationships that you make there, and, you know, they used to laugh that you would have a freshman class. Well, I had some great freshman class members who I still stay in contact with. So take every opportunity that you can to get involved and to understand the things that FSBA can offer. So with that, we are now landed.
We are adjourned.
It is my honor to congratulate and thank you for your dedicated work and tireless hours for Orange County Public Schools. We take this moment to join in celebrating your contributions. Throughout your service, you have used your voices to be strong supporters and community advocates for all of the students and families in this district, and you exemplify our core values, our vision, and mission. Our shared vision is to be the top producer of successful students in the nation. We agree that this is only possible through the support and involvement of families and the community. Because of your dedication and leadership, our vision and mission are becoming a reality. We've reached a district-record-high graduation rate of 93.8%. We lead the state of Florida in growth of advanced placement course enrollment and exam successes. And we are leaders in digital learning, with more than 135,000 digital devices in our schools. During your combined nearly 60 years of service on the school board, you have committed yourself to rendering quality service and accountability, which have positively impacted the lives of many. On behalf of our 213,000 students and 25,000 employees, we extend our gratitude for your dedication and exemplary leadership. It is my hope that what comes next for each of you is another exciting phase of your life. Godspeed.